Consider the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the earth, being just this for all.
Oh, come on up. We're excited to have you here this evening. Yeah, I'll tell you.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Uh, please see all of you and most of you. Uh, so as a reminder, my name is Kyla Marion. I am our community coordinator for the district. And I oversee our recreation and enrichment programming, um, as well as our childcare program. Um, so I give you guys all a flyer, um, just to highlight a little bit of what happened over the summer for our recreation enrichment programming. And then on the other side is, uh, some fall stuff now that we're doing. Um, so to discuss the summer twenty twenty four, uh, it was a really successful summer. We had a lot of, uh, great enrollments. We had over twenty five new participants in, um, our youth and adult courses. It was a really fun time. Um, we've had a lot of people who came and were enrolled from last year and before and stuff, but we've also had a lot of new participants too. Uh, comparison to last part of the summer prior to twenty, uh, three, uh, is about the same number of enrollments, but we did offer a broader range of, um, our offers, just to help kids with their needs too. So, um, now it's something that we take you guys very seriously and those people ask for something, I give it to them. Um, so obviously this isn't all of our camps, but this is just some of the highlights for our new camp or camps that, um, we've been able to partner with for a few years or several years that have just always been a favorite of us. I won't go through all of them, but, um, just as an overall, um, you can see it. We have the little icon, um, next to the boxes that were class partnerships with businesses, um, that are part of the chamber, um, and for, um, they also sponsor some of our programs. And two, one thing that we really look forward, um, in our goals in trying to figure out how we can keep our cost low to participants, especially as inflation rises. And one way is to, uh, get sponsorships too, because that helps with, um, uh, things like supplies, when we need to do Legos or basketball or whatever it might be. Um, and then with the rates of instructors going up too, if they're, uh, for instance, staff, um, then that is, um, obviously causes us to write scripts sometimes too, to be able to stabilize that. So sponsorships are also really sweet. Um, but specifically everything in this, um, page of mine is the drama camp. Our partnerships with businesses, so the pizza making pizza bar was a huge take. Um, Jody has always been phenomenal with the partner, obviously with the district and the whole, but also just with community and options. So we were like, hey, so you want to do a pizza making test? And he was all for it. We loved it. Um, kids, kids had the best time there. It was so much fun. Um, and first their crazy video a bunch of times and some of the things too with them more either in the winter, spring or, um, for sure next summer. So that was a big one, obviously drama camp, which the community at times, uh, highlighted this summer, which is exciting. Uh, we did get a sponsorship through the youth, um, kinship mentoring program. Um, and that was, that's always a really big one, especially for the process. It's expensive with all of the, um, lights and TVs for, um, the production and things like that. And so that, um, sponsorship specifically helped purchase crops and, um, the pizza for the kiddos and stuff. And so we were actually able to keep the price the same. And while it's still expensive, I mean, we were definitely made a lot of that raise the price that costs, because that's what we were keeping. Um, as well as the cost of food. Aviation Adventures was one that we partnered with Flight X though on, um, and that was at the end of August by familiar forked open it, but they were running and they ended up. They learned about all the aircraft. They got a tumor room and pretend they were both pilots. They learned both physics. It was just a lot of fun. Um, and so we're hoping to continue our partnership with them too. They've got a lot of great programming for, um, students in general too. Uh, but just the little kids trying to get them excited to work the aviation options that are out there. Um, and then of course finding a school was the last one where, um, we partnered. We should do that. Find your school. That's what I'm doing right? Um, but that's always a fun one and a highlight of everybody. And this year actually specifically, we had several kiddos who registered multiple times, because they loved it. And it's like, oh my gosh, I want to do this again. And we're like, well, you can't, because it's a different circuit than you said we used to think. Um, so just being able to form those business partners has always been really rewarding and it's not only, um, does help us a lot about our businesses and the community, but just brings our community out. Always been a goal of mine. We're, since the community education and all, community oftentimes means our participants and our families, that also means those businesses. And so it's, we're bringing everybody to, uh, a bit of like. Um, and then on here too, um, like a more art, for example, we had a big request for a lot of love art camps, um, last summer and people were hoping to do more. So we were able to, uh, find another vendor and, uh, she, we tried her out and we worked her with the adult, but kids, like I said, loved it. And she's actually our vendor for the fall and, um, her, I think, a full or really full person at her school, who's just really enjoyed her work. Um, and then we partnered with, um, like youth flag football and Samma baseball, our, our past, um, graduates from Port Angeles. To offer youth camps and stuff too, so those all are successful. And the kids love working with the young high school students or even like the kids too, um, because it's way more kind of event coached than someone like me who had to go soccer. And you can find a soccer instructor. No, she knows all about that. Like, obviously being a little bit on the, um, heavier side right now, it's a love camp. So it's just a lot more fun for them to, um, look up to those boys. So we really enjoyed that as well. Um, and then of course, uh, things like Camp Out Camp was something where we have small enrollments, but it's something that, you know, not every kid loves or, 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 you know, we've got a lot of the dungeon kiddos out there. And so we partnered with, um, our wrestling coach, Kyle Full on that. And he did a phenomenal job. We got to pick the kids up new each, um, they got to build fighters, they got to do. So that's something that those little camps that we try out. Um, and then of course like volleyball, um, camp, basketball camp, all the ones coached by our uproot state coaches and are always very successful. A lot of great feedback. And that's where they also pull in those athletes too, um, to just help support the programs and then those kids get to see their role models too. And can't we feel their nice? Um, and then the other one, fun, is the prep valley. And that one, uh, is a fun story because this vendor actually did programming. For instance, we had Beverly who plays for all of our current staff and, uh, the director and me, all about her relatively. Um, and she just had some kind of hold with communications and stuff like that. And so she decided not to partner with community and for a while. And then, uh, we were able to reach out to her this year for the summer. And she was like, okay, I'll give you the day to go. We'll try it. We'll see how it goes. Um, and she's really, she actually really appreciated our staff. And that's a huge shout out to my team, too. We tried to have people on site to be really supportive of instructors. Um, but that was something where she was like, okay, let's do it. Let's do some more stuff from the school year. And she's got a valley classroom this fall that's full, um, and the kids will love it. So it's just a really nice, ever boarding thing to have people and then see them, um, flourish. And actually be able to help us too with, um, as a team that also just, again, with the community members and proper, proper, really cool. Um, so summer was very successful. We did a lot of great times. Um, it went by way too fast. So it's, it's all been done with everybody. Um, but those highlights just show stuff that we need to keep growing and we're trying to. Um, businesses either in the school year or two. Uh, so then, uh, quickly talking on the fall too, we're in full force, full force fall. It's been a very busy few weeks for everybody. Um, we just kicked off a lot of our, um, community at class and class week. And so we've got most of our after schools, um, like I said, we have the park camp. We've partnered with Dash Sports, which is a vendor. Um, a lot of our after school activities, especially we've been working hard, writing really hard dishes to find vendors, because it's hard to find staff. Again, we're all tired by one o'clock, two o'clock in the afternoon. Um, so we're trying to figure out how we can still support our community, especially as our children's club has a waitlist. Um, hopefully at least give some families different options. And one of them is to at least give them a part time option to try out even some of the classes too. And again, then you're learning how these the kiddos can see what they like and what they don't like too. Um, so they're all going really well. It's exciting. Um, and again, we've been able to get some partnerships and sponsorships. Um, so I highlighted them on, like, sheet and term though. Um, but the biggest thing is, um, the adult work highlights. Um, we've been actually getting babies and adults, and that's probably the really hard world to try and grow. Because especially for parents, you'll put your kid activity. It won't really feel kind of rush up. It's like a really cool class. I want to do it. And then you don't actually have to. So we're really trying to get people to, um, put themselves first every once in a while and actually have a fun night out. Um, so we have things like the woodware pizza class that's coming up in October. And that's a partnership with Ultimate Omega. We've got fun things, um, like, um, the make your own holiday food centerpiece with one of our high school staff. Um, so just trying to find some different fun crafts and activities and hobbies that all the different adults can enjoy. So, uh, we're working that and then we're also trying to offer some different, um, older, you know, sixteen plus, um, and sixteen year options too. So we've got things like, you know, focusing on retirement, you've got tax planning, you've got social security, we've got medical, um, my chart, trying to learn how to do my, my chart. And we're trying to do a lot more partnerships with everybody and figuring out, again, what the community wants and what they sign up for, um, but how will they learn? So, and then again, our, our youth courses are going awesome. Um, and we're just starting to try to figure out what we can offer. A few things on the list, like the music accompaniment. Um, for example, that's one taught by a preschool teacher in our family center building. So again, trying to inform like, helping even the teachers to run some stuff, um, but then also something that's mindful and really good for the age group type of, you know, the way the little could also, you know, see who prints a little bit, which is a good thing. Um, so all is off to a great start with looking forward to the rest of the year. Um, and the biggest thing that's coming up is our community at scholarship fundraiser, which is on October, our Friday, October fifteenth. Um, we're doing a family pizza and bingo nights. Um, one of our big events is always, again, try to keep things affordable for families. We've got a lot of community reduced students in the dinner. And so that's one of our best books that we offer. And so if you continue to be able to try that with your, uh, creative thought, maybe fundraising, I think, yeah. So our staff are being back. Um, and so if you guys know of any, or if you've got kiddos, it's going to be for ages. We'll have guys with the little kiddos all the way to her folks. Um, and it should be really fun night. Um, and who doesn't want to come and just test pizza too? You just want to know what's pizza. Um, so we hope that goes well. Otherwise, we've got our family center, a homecoming party, uh, to bring the community together, uh, as well as we're, uh, giving a night which are early. Um, other than that, we're setting stuff. We're already prepping for week of spring. Um, we're working to, um, to take something to the end of this month. And then it's whole course. We got a lot of building and everything. Uh, any questions?
No, no.
Never any, you know, like two years ahead. Somebody asked me the other day, this would have a lot more. Yeah. So, well, yes, we can do ask, um, our timeline. Yeah. So we're hoping to have, uh, we'll be doing our printed catalog again, because we just, that's really helpful for a lot of families. It actually seems that we get it in their mailboxes or can pick it up. Um, so we're hoping to have it in mailboxes the first week of December. And then our, um, registration is Tuesday after, I think, September eleventh.
I told them in November, so why didn't you?
Yes, you know, it's better to tell early than late.
You know, that's a change for us because we can get that over. And then in the eighties, we're just one catalog, uh. And I think that the, uh, plan is. All. Uh. See. And all. Participation from families and. People are being different things. People are. They're, uh, budget strong, just shaped up, just a lot of.
Right, people. The day it's off here, a couple of moms talking about how nice it is that they have a, yeah. So it's a soccer, football, volleyball. We can sign up for half because they're right after school and then it's like a little chase. So if your kid hates it, there's three more classes. It's like, you know, so.
Yeah, we're, that's what we're trying to do. Because it's, it's an affordable option. Yeah, it's a taste of it, but you don't have to commit to association.
You're very much. Have a great evening. Okay, I got a little note from Emily that she's having a mood problem. So forgive me. I'm going to be playing with this for a minute here.
Well, that's something you can do in your comments, but I'm assuming there is.
Uh, we'll move on to board day for committee reports and, uh, we'll share with Eric.
John, um, I had policy night and then a agenda. All right. Um, policy and, uh, I attended the candidate forums and that was really cool. They drafted them up for ten seconds. That was, in roles do you realize that was?
That was intense. Why would it seem that I was? And then I also had, um, a, um, the volleyball.
Emily, any better? Can you hear us?
Yep, I'm here.
Are you, can you hear us fine or better or not?
Can somebody from the board say something quick?
Hello.
Hello.
Much better. I can actually hear you guys now. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, I had a couple of, uh, C executive board meetings. Um, they were meeting kind of regularly right now. Um, Brad Lundell had retired at the end of the school year and, uh, so they're doing a lot of reorganizing and hiring. And so, um, there's been some, some stuff there. Um, and then I had agenda planning. I know it. Uh, student council.
Yeah. So I know last time we talked about online tickets and I found out that it's already happening. It's already a thing. And I was talking to Debbie, our activity director assistant, um, and she loves it. It is saving her so much time and stress because she doesn't have to handle that money. She doesn't have to worry about keeping like just handfuls of money in her desk and having to go to the bank every after game or whatever. So it's saving her time. Um, there was, I think, a few people that were like, because you have to scan it on your phone and have to pay online. There are a few people that were like, well, my freshmen, my freshmen can't pay online. It was like, well, maybe ask your parents. But that was the only really negative feedback and it was from only like one person. So, um, I think it's going well. Um, I attended all three candidate forums, um, the school board one, the city council one, and then the Shippensburg county commissioner and state reps. I thought it was interesting. Now I can, when I drive by, people have signs. I'm like, now I can judge it. And then, um, Kayla brought up, um, community things for like elderly people. And, um, we're doing dementia friends in the high school. So me and Elsa, and I think we recruited three other people, get trained by Julie, um, to talk about dementia with, um, people in health class. So we go there once every try and talk about how to, what to do if you run into someone with dementia, what are the resources type thing. So that is coming up, I believe, in the next two weeks. So I'll have to let you guys know how that goes.
Yeah. And then, um, the homecoming game and dance were, are now both October 11th on Friday. And the homecoming dance this year theme, the theme is, uh, Mamma Mia. So that'll be really fun. Uh, musical practices started up last Monday and those are going really well, very exciting. It's, uh, Legally Blonde. And then we're celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month.
Lots of stuff going on. All right. Superintendent report. Ben.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm going to send, uh, the board a link to, uh, Youth Frontiers. I wanted to just make a reference to that. As part of our district climate and culture, uh, action plan, just trying to make sure that we have the recipe to ensure that all of our students feel safe, respected, and like they belong. There were some areas that we thought, there were some gaps and some of that was really just in the student experience. And we're trying to, to bring in, um, an opportunity for our, some of our students to go through a retreat. And it's put on through Youth Frontiers. And I've had the experience to be able to, uh, participate in quite a few of those. And it's really a moving experience that will change, I believe, students' lives. Um, we're working to bring in, uh, retreat for our fourth grade. I believe our seventh grade and then our 10th grade. And, uh, we're excited about that. And I'm, I'm actually hoping and Chloe will probably reach out to you with some of those dates. I do think that's a worthy thing to cover. I think it is a really, uh, pretty awesome thing. And you'll be able to see that in, in what I send you. It's just going to be a little video and I'll kind of share with you what that is. Um, another thing that we're working on in our district, uh, climate and culture action plan is just, uh, how our staff members, how we can reduce what we call our perception gap between the student experience or, or the, the adults' perception of the student experience and the actual student experience. And just so that they can have a full, fully better understand, um, a day in the life of a student. And we do think that that will help them, uh, be a better educator, right? Just to have a full understanding of what's going on. And if there's a perception that of one thing, but in reality it's completely different, then I think that we need to know that and understand that. Okay? Um, so I'll, I'll, uh, inform you more on this, uh, program that we're working on called Voices, the Voices Framework. And it's an opportunity for us to hear the perspective of students, um, at the high school and the middle school. Okay? So that's another piece that I, I want you to be aware of. Um, I think it's, uh, important for you to know that we do meet once a month administratively. And we call it our administrative professional learning community. And we try and focus that entire meeting on student learning. And we try and push away the balls, the beans and the buses that kind of sometimes can overwhelm us in our days and just focus on what we're here to do. So, uh, this, today we had a session where we just fully dug into our data and we tried to analyze that to try and make good decisions in the classroom to improve student, student achievement. This is something that you're going to continue to hear me talk about. I do think that we're doing all the right things, but we do need to see the needle moved as it relates to students, uh, being on grade level and reading and math, right? And, uh, that's something that we're just, we, we're going to keep working hard on and trying to coach our principals, uh, up to be strong instructional leaders in their buildings. So that when they're lead, working with their, uh, student learning leadership team and their PLCs and at grade levels, they can really dig into that and make good, efficient decisions, uh, educationally and try and differentiate instruction in the classroom. So it's not like, you know, if you have a class of thirty students, uh, you know, we can't have a one size fits all. We need to be able to try and diagnose all the specific needs of the students. And it's really hard to do because it's easier to just do one thing for everybody. So that's more developing that we have to do as a, as a team to be able to better differentiate our instruction. Because, you know, our data will show us that, you know, we have some, in every one of our classes, you have super high flyers that have already maybe mastered the material. And you have some that are really struggling and some might be a grade level or two or three, uh, years behind even in, in reading, um, and or math. So those are things that we, we have to do better at. Um, we are still trying to dig out from some of the gaps that, that we had from some learning loss, uh, from a few years ago. And, uh, you know, we're optimistic, but we gotta work really hard and we gotta stay focused on what we're here to do and that student achievement. So, um, more to come on that. Uh, we have our first of the year community engagement task force meeting that will be next Tuesday at the middle school. As you remember, we did a big meeting last spring. We had a hundred people RSVP, uh, that they were coming. We had about eighty show up. And we just gave kind of an overview, big picture and shared kind of our plan for the year. And then we would have a series of meetings throughout this year. Our first one is coming up, um, next week. And, uh, it's going to be very little of me talking. Elders is going to be doing quite a bit of presenting just on some school funding pieces, the different kinds of referendums that there are, the pros and the cons, the different kinds of referendums and those kinds of things. Okay? And then so we'll, we kind of have a plan of what topics we're going to focus on, um, throughout the fall to hopefully get to a place, uh, in February-ish that that group will bring a recommendation to the board in terms of the future, uh, as it relates to facilities and or potential additional revenue to operate our school district. So we're going to put it in the hands of that group and that's all starting. Um, and I'll just end with this and it's, uh, it's just the reality of the world that we live in. I mean, we're an organization of student learning. That's what we're here to do. But, uh, there's some prerequisites to learning. One is, the, the main one is everyone needs to be safe. Um, and, uh, you know, it's getting to be tougher and tougher in our world. I mean, you can't turn on the, uh, nightly news and not see that there's some, uh, some school chasing down some threat of violence in their schools, whether it be a hoax that's traveling around, um, some social media, uh, piece. Or if there's, or the, or the threat is real. So when we get those kinds of pieces of information in, it's kind of drop everything that we have. We bring our crisis team together and we, and we start investigating and we have to make judgment calls based upon the real time information that we have. And we invite, or we, we work with lots of different authorities to help us kind of make sure that we're safe. And, uh, this last week, uh, you know, w- we're the same as a lot of districts in our state and country where we had to chase down some of that. And we're, you know, thankful that everybody's safe, but we do take everything that we, that comes across super serious. And, uh, you know, I'm happy with how, you know, the results, uh, of this last week, because our team really responded well and, and things went great. The thing that gets a little tricky, and I want the board to just know this, is that everybody wants to know what's going on all of the time. And I guess we, I look at it as our priority, my priority, if something is happening, is that we take care of the situation at hand. Um, and then as soon as we know what's going on, we will send out a communication. But it, you know, there are some steps that take place and, uh, we, there was a communication that I sent out last week. And, uh, you know, we felt like it was very timely, but I, uh, I'm hearing that some people felt like we should have been sooner. So we do the best. I, uh, I'm hearing that some people felt like we should have been sooner, so we do the best that we can. So just, it, it's a reality of, well, I don't think schools dealt with some of this stuff many, many years ago. Um, well, it was probably other things, different things, but, uh, just seems to be something that is more common place now. So I'll end my remarks with that.
Any questions for Ben? All right, we will move on to approve the agenda. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Motion's been made by Melissa, seconded by Eric Lynx. Is there any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All right, agenda is approved. Item eight, discuss and act on previous board meeting minutes from September third. Is there a motion to approve those as presented? Motion's been made by Chad, is there a second?
Second.
That was in unison. Well, second on, uh, second from Don, uh, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. All right, minutes are approved. Consent agenda. Somebody make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Uh, motion's been made by Eric Stramberg. Uh, is there a second? Second by Chad. Uh, any comments or questions on the consent? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. All right, those are approved. Our first information item is Rome River Building Plan.
Go on up. We're, we're thankful to be able to have our great representatives from Rome River here to present. Uh, on one thing that, that I think that you've heard from them before, but it was, uh, I think we were missing a couple of board members at that meeting, and it's such an important topic that we thought we'd bring them back again, and then you can ask any questions if you have. What they're gonna be talking about, I believe, the hope is that we will have on an October school board meeting for the board to vote on. I'm not sure if that would be the first or the second, uh, meeting. Probably the second, which would be the third Tuesday in October. So we'll turn it over.
Okay, Madam Chair, members of the board, as a reminder, I'm Tanya Tacker. I'm your Executive Director of Special Ed. And this is Tracy Wells, she's our Director of Finance and HR. Uh, Superintendent Barton, like he had mentioned, had asked us to come back and just do a brief summary of the presentation that we had done last time, as there were some board members that were absent. Um, I assume I can just move next slide?
Uh, Emily, do you have to move the slides for her?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so the last time we spoke, um, we had a lo, little longer agenda. We had taken a few slides out just, um, so we could focus on, um, some of the, what we consider a little bit more important topics, not like the whole thing isn't important, but, um, why look at replacing Rome River North? As you know, as you may know, we have three, uh, federal setting for sites. Two of them are in Cambridge and one of them is in Malaca. That's our Rome River North facility. Um, we have been talking about replacing Rome River North for a very, very long time, many, many years. Uh, right now, we lease all of our setting for sites. Um, some of the reasons why we're looking at replacing Rome River North, I've written down there. We have an abundance more reasons why, but here are some of the, um, reasons why we're exploring billing options for our Rome River North facility. Um, right now, it is our only federal setting for site within our cooperative that does not have a special locking system. Both, uh, Rome River South and Rome River East, which are located in Cambridge, have special locking systems. And what that means, it is, it allows, um, students to stay in the building. It allows, uh, other people who are not allowed in the building to not come in. Um, a lot of our students have elopement, um, issues and sometimes just wanna run and take off, and it's, it's located right across the street from Malaca, right on Highway twenty-three. Sometimes they just have Dollar General in their mind, and they're just, you know, take off across the busy streets. So it really increases, um, student and staff, staff safety with these locking systems. Um, right now, Rome River North not having one, it takes a lot of staff, um, and people power to be able to make sure that the students are safe and that they're not eloping and running out of the building. Or, um, having kids come back in the building if they are, um, dysregulated and trying to cause, you know, some more um, issues or more, um, behavioral incidences. Our current billing layout is not conducive to setting for special ed students or students who are receiving setting for, uh, services. If you've ever been there or if you heard me talk last time, it is, um, it was an old grocery store. So it was an old grocery store, and then, um, Malaca had part of it for their ALC, and then we were able to, um, take over the whole building once Malaca built their ALC. Um, and it's just, it's very cookie cutter. It takes, um, many keys to get from one side of the building to the other side if there's a behavior. Um, you know, time is of the es- essence, so we want to make sure that we're able to get from one side of the building to the other side, um, to help with some of those behavioral, um, you know, issues or, or, um, acts, possibly acts of violence that, that might be happening within our, within our programs. And so we have to also, we have to unlock multiple doors to get there, because that locking system is not in place. Uh, we also don't have any space for recreational activity at Rome River North. We just got the parking lot repaved. Um, we have nothing. We have, we have zero playgrounds. We don't have a gym. Um, our one site in Cambridge does have a small gym to be able to use for those students. Um, Malaca has been very, um, uh, welcoming, um, to a point to, to allow some of our students to go over to the playground in, um, Malaca's playground, but that can't be consistent, because they have other kids out there and they have scheduled recreation time. So every now and then, we're able to go across the street to, um, Malaca's playground, but otherwise, we don't have any recre, recreational activity space for them. Having, um, a different, uh, building, uh, for Rome River North would allow us to serve more students. And that's why we're in this job. That's why we're in this position. That's why we're in this, um, why we're in education is to serve students and to give them the supports and the services that they need. And the students that attend our programs are really tough, tough kids. A lot of them have, um, you know, trauma. A lot of them have had, um, experienced neglect and abuse and, and have a lot of mental health issues, so. By having a larger facility, we could serve more students, um, which is really exciting to me. Um, just be able to, um, to help those students. We, um, we are one of the, one of the cooperatives or one of the organizations that do not have very long waiting lists right now. Uh, because, because of our, uh, programming, we're able to reintegrate kids rather quickly back into their home districts when they've met that criteria. Um, a lot of times, setting for, federal setting for sites are the last resort for kids. Um, there are a lot of, uh, waiting lists for residential. A lot of our kids might need residential services, which we're not, um, but, but they need those services, and there are year-long waiting lists. And so being able to have a, another building would, again, allow us to, um, provide more services. If you've ever been at Rome River North, which you're welcome to come and visit sometime, um, it is not, uh, very appealing to parents and students as an old, um, grocery store. We've done what we can with painting and, and decorating and doing those types of things, but um, a lot of times, parents are like, oh, is there a different site I could maybe go to, or, you know, my student could go to? Um, a lot of students feel like they are, you know, um, they don't deserve that big of, or that nice of a building, and so they don't always treat it well either. So, um, you know, they, they feel like they don't deserve something nice, and so that they kind of just get the leftovers at Rome River North. Cause our Rome River South and Rome River East, uh, sites are a little, I mean, they're nicer facilities. And then the biggest reason is, um, right now, um, new legislation passed, uh, last year that helps it make um, the possibility of co-ops to own their own building instead of leasing an actual affordable option, um, for us. So that's one of the bigger reasons why we are looking at replacing Rome River North. Uh, next slide, Emily. And I'll turn it over to Tracy to talk, to talk a little bit about the project budget. The last time we were here, we did, um, show a, um, a, a plan or a concept of what the building might look like. Uh, we're more than welcome to share that with you again. Um, I don't have it on this presentation. And then also just kind of, uh, what we could look at for land size. I think it needs about five acres, um, that we're looking at for, for land. So a little bit about the project budget.
Yeah, we were working with Nexus Solutions and Baird Financial on the project over the last year or so. Um, it came in at fourteen million six hundred thousand, and that was just under thirty thousand square feet. So still smaller than a typical school that you're used to. Um, does include a smaller gym, um, and takes up with well and septic should we need that, depending on where the land is. Um, needs about five acres, and that would include a small playground, parking, and all of that. Uh, so the fourteen million six hundred thousand, and again, we can send out to the presentation that includes the, the concept as well. Um, we toured several setting for programs around the state as well, some older ones, some newer ones, to see, um, what's out there, what's being done. Um, setting for programs have a lot of, um, different needs than regular schools, um, just because they get beat up on a lot more, the walls, you know, different walls. You don't just put up regular sheet rock, you know, lots of different things like that. You don't put glass, um. So lots of different features that you need to consider. Um, next slide, please, Emily. Um, so the way that this would work, um, it would be a twenty-year lease purchase agreement. Uh, currently, um, and it changes a little bit every year. We currently utilize the lease levy system right now for all of our sites. And right now, around fifty-five percent of the payments are made by member districts through the lease levy. Members are able to utilize the lease levy, non-members are not. But allowing non-members to use slots when they're open really brings down the cost for our members. So forty-five percent on average every year is used by non-members. And then, of course, that really brings down the bills for the members, so that's why we have those slots open. Um, and so the fifty-five percent that, that's left over, we use the lease levy system, um, for, so you do not have to use the gen ed funds. Um, and that would stay the same, only after twenty years, we would own it. Currently, how it works is we, somebody owns the building, and we use the lease levy system, and we just keep paying it year after year. Um, so that would not change. The new, um, legislation that Tanya talked about that passed is there's an additional sixty-five dollars per APU, um, that can be used for the lease levy system. That's just for co-ops and intermediates, so it doesn't dip into the, before it dips into the two twelve that you're maybe used to hearing about. There's an additional sixty-five dollars now. Um, so, um, currently, member districts pay based on, um, Rome River enrollment and child count. Um, that fifty-five percent that you're used to seeing. So it depends how, um, the, the numbers that you're sending there for the kids. And of course, that changes every year. And again, these kids come and go as they transition back to the district. Uh, next slide, please, Emily. Um, it might be a little hard to see, but if you go down, um, you can see Princeton there. We've got all the member districts listed. Um, and this is using, um, FY twenty-three data, because that's the most final data that Baird had to work with. Um, this spring when they were working with us, Princeton's portion, um, including a new build um, was three hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars. A hundred and two thousand eight hundred would come from that sixty-five dollars. Two hundred and forty-four thousand was coming from the two twelve. Zero would come from gen ed. And a hundred and sixty-two thousand eighty-nine would still be left over, um, of the two twelve for whatever other projects Princeton in the future may think of using. Next slide, Emily. And then this other slide here, um, just shows the tax impact with the new project added. Um, you'll see here, I like to show the three hundred thousand dollar property there, because I don't think many homes are valued at two hundred thousand dollars anymore. Um, this is an annual increase. It's eighteen dollars and eighty-one cents per year on a three hundred thousand dollar home. Um, and the reason that, that is showing is, is pretty affordable is because we're spreading it out over, first of all, we're, we're gen ed billing the non-members that aren't able to lease levy it, and then the extra that's left over is spread across six member districts. So the impact, um, there, the eighteen dollars, um, under, under two bucks a month is going to, is Princeton's portion. And again, this is using last year's enrollment at our sites for, uh, Princeton resident students. So obviously, there's fluctuation as there is every year, lowers, um, can be lower, can be a little higher every year based on your numbers.
Uh, next slide, Emily. So we do have some timelines and next steps. As you can see, we have done, um, uh, board presentations at each one of our board member districts, um, in July and August. Uh, we're doing some questions and concerns, or asking questions, or addressing questions, I should say. Um, our concerns this month, um, as needed. We've also had, um, a couple of, uh, conversations with Baird Financial, attending some board meetings as well to offer some clarification. I know they just attended our governing board, um, meeting that Ms. Lynch was at as well, um, this last week, I think, already. Um, and so, uh, that's an option as well, if you had any additional questions. Um, we're looking at, uh, because we are joint powers with six member districts, we'd have to do some updating to our joint powers agreement to ensure, um, there's language in there about, um, owning a building, cause right now we lease all of our buildings. And so, uh, JPA update and then some member district approvals, we're looking at or hoping for October. Um, the executive council, which is made up of all your superintendents, with Superintendent Barton sits on that. Um, and the governing board, like I mentioned, Ms. Lynch is on that, uh, board. Both of those boards have passed, uh, the resolution already to move towards building this new facility. Uh, Bram actually just passed it last night as well, was unanimous vote with Bram. I know, um, Ogilvy is looking at presenting it to the board October twenty, or I'm sorry, September twenty-third. So there's that option that you could, um, look at it in September, which you, I think this is your last board meeting for September. Otherwise, we're shooting for October, um, for a date to have it, uh, to have it voted on, um, at each board member that has remaining. And then you can see the rest of the, uh, timeline. If, if it is passed, because we are joint powers, it has to pass at each member district. If there's one member district that says no, then, um, it does not move forward. It does, we, we don't move forward with building. Um, and so if it is passed at all six, uh, member districts, we would begin the design, and we would have the final levy certification, all those types of things, um, you can see in that timeline that we would, um, be working on, so. Any questions that you have for us?
Have you had any negative or feedback from other districts where they're a little hesitant to, to go out to do this, or?
I wouldn't say any negative feedback, just some questions, like what will the JPA language look like? Um, what is the impact, you know, um, for the, the tax impact? Um, how does the lease levy system work? Uh, those types of questions that we've been able to answer or that Baird will come in and present and those types of things. I don't know if you have anything to add.
Smart questions. Um, Malaca, um, I don't know if you noticed on one of the slides, Malaca is the district where, because they had built an ALC maybe seven, eight years ago, they still have twelve years left to pay on that. So they have around twenty-five thousand dollars that would have to come out of their gen ed bucket until that ALC is paid off. Um, so they're, they're the ones that are a little more hesitant on it. Um, that number did look more like eighty thousand dollars. That's been brought down to twenty-four, which is great. Um, so I'm not sure where they're at. They've been working with Baird on that. Um, but more just questions like that.
Um, I think there's that, um, I think there's that, uh, desire to own our own building instead of leasing, because, you know, each year we make improvements, um, and we're just continuing to lease and we'll never own, um, some, you know, we're not owning any of those buildings right now, and then the lease payment just continues to increase as well.
We do this already.
Yes.
Um, and so we will need to renew the lease if this doesn't pass, which the lease will increase. And we will just continue to do it with no end in sight, obviously, if we don't own it. Um, so it won't be as high, but there won't be a cutoff date in twenty years, um, so.
Is that, um, Princeton specifically slowly? Is that what we got from the meeting just last week?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we all got that also.
Well, and, and if, if it doesn't pass and we continue on with our existing lease, we're also, we're also gonna have to pay to make some necessary upgrades.
we're also, we're also going to have to pay to make some necessary upgrades. So we'll have that lease and then whatever we need to, you know, do for a major project. And then, of course, that's going to a building that we don't even own.
That's a great point. Uh, we've recently, I, I would say last year, we had it a couple of times, this year we had, um, we've had some issues with the building itself. For example, one side of the building, the, um, ground is at a higher level, um, elevation and the roof is at a, uh, more of a slant, so you can actually get up on the roof. And we've had, um, students, um, who are, um, you know, in crisis, uh, whether they're suicidal or they are having, um, they're dysregulated and they're having some, you know, big behaviors, climb up on the roof. And we've had emergency services involved, fire, police, ambulance, all those types of things. And that has increased as well. So like Superintendent Barton mentioned, if it doesn't pass, um, we will need to do something to that building just because, um, not only the layout, but the accessibility to the roof and then, um, there are, you know, there's some, um, issues when it rains really, really bad or when the snow melts and those types of things. And your typical road interior there, those types of, um, issues that we'll have to deal with. Um, you know, if it doesn't pass, we will have to make some improvement on that building, um, at some point.
So I think the biggest thing that we'll have to figure out is this joint powers agreement rewrite is, okay, now we're in the business of owning buildings as a co-op. If there's a district that pulls out of the co-op, how are they going to get their equity back and what they paid for? So that, that's part of the discussion as it needs to happen with that joint power agreement.
Yep. And Baird and then they have an, an attorney that they're working with as well that are working on that language to address exactly what you mentioned, Mr. Barton, is if somebody would, would withdraw from our co-op or even if somebody would join our co-op, you know, what are, what are their responsibilities as far as this building that we own?
At what, at what point will we have that language? I'm, I'm just curious to.
Um, by the end of this month, in time for, um, your October, um, second meeting is what I'm thinking, not October first. Cause I think your first meeting's on October first and that might be too close. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it would have to pass through the executive council and governing board, so we'll probably have another special governing board meeting. Lucky you, yeah.
Prepared.
Yes, I know. You are. So. Yeah, so that language will be coming soon, uh, for you to be able to review and, and then again, we can always invite Baird or, um, I can't remember the, the law firm that they're, they're working with, um, to the meeting so they can kind of go through some of those pieces of language with you as well. So you're fully informed before you vote.
Yeah.
All right, so this is the second time we got to hear this presentation and we also have Melissa who sits on the governing board. And they're ha- they're happy to come, drive all the way to Princeton, spend another Tuesday night with us.
Whenever you would like us.
I bet.
I did hear there was cookies, but we didn't see any, but that's okay.
I'll get you.
No, I'm totally kidding. No, honestly, like if you have questions, you can contact us by phone, email, or we.
Yeah, the attorney in Baird's really great at, um, going back and forth with emails or questions throughout the weekend stuff as well. Yeah.
Great. So you have a month, you have a month to filter this through and if you need any more information, just let us know.
Let us know, we'd be happy to come back.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. See you next month.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Yes, good well.
All right, uh, our next item, information item is the levy.
Michelle?
So, the levy. We, uh, have our proposed levy on the state is, MBE is still working on the proposed levy. Uh, there's lots of changes every day, lots of reruns. Um, so this is definitely not our final for the year. Um, if you look at Fund One, you see we're slightly under, uh, a year ago, uh, we had some, our reemployment is, um, a little less and that's unemployment and that is people who, um, for various reasons, leave the district, um, and can file for unemployment based on that. This is not the in-between the summer piece that we now have. So that went down, um, our, uh, enrollment, um, numbers going forward are lower. So that affects most, many of the calculations. And, uh, otherwise, it's pretty much, um, there's not much for changes in Fund One, but I will say this, if, uh, Rome River, if we move forward with that project, that would change our lease levy, uh, line, it looks like for December for our fund. So I think their goal is to get that on the final. So that would, would change that number and that's in Fund One. Uh, community education is relatively flat. Um, not much for changes in that area. And then our general debt, as you recall, um, they're doing the ventilation project and we will be working on a, um, bond, three-year short bond. That is included in, uh, the debt levy schedule as a preliminary number because obviously we haven't gotten off the curb yet, but that'll be coming up here in October. So that is all for the levy. Right now, uh, we're looking at a one point four six percent increase overall. Which on the tax base will be pretty flat.
Which is good.
Yes.
Yeah, that's pretty low increase and, and, and I think what we found is for the most part, even whenever we do have an increase, people's taxes for the school taxes still make them down because it's spread across more people, you know, as we get more growth and things in the area. And a, a one percent increase is pretty, it's pretty low.
Headwind.
Give you a chocolate bar if it can be front page. But in, in just, just remember, I mean, the gen- the general rule of thumb across the state is that boards will certify or vote to accept the maximum. And then we, and then we come back in December and do this truth and taxation meeting after people have an opportunity to see their statements, if you will, on what their taxes are going to do. And that will be what, it will be based upon what we, the one percent or whatever. And then we'll have the hearing and the board can always lower it if they'd like to. So.
In certain areas.
Yeah. But you can never increase it.
Yeah, you can't increase it, won't you? If you only did ninety percent, you couldn't go with the big jigs.
No, not on the first call, you. If you only do ninety percent, we'll just go back there and start to figure out what we got to cut because that's cutting us off pretty bad.
All right, any questions for Michelle then?
Oh, one percent, right?
That's what it is at this moment.
At this moment, yeah.
It's going to stay that way though. All right, uh, then our first action item is the levy. Um, is there a motion to approve the levy, levy resolution as presented?
So.
Second motion been made by Eric Lynx, second by Melissa. Any comments or questions on it? All right, uh, resolution, so we'll vote by roll call, starting with Chad.
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, resolution passes. Levy the max, Michelle.
All right, sounds good.
So we need to set our truth and taxation meeting. Um, it's like we're looking at December seventeenth at six P M. So. Motion's been made by Donna, second by Chad. Uh, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. All right, our meeting is set for December seventeenth. Uh, second reading of policies. Any questions for the committee or would somebody like to make a motion to accept the second readings as presented? Motion's been made by Eric Stramberg, is there a second?
Certainly.
Second by Eric Lynx. Any comments or questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Policies are approved. Uh, we have no additions to our agenda tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Melissa, second by Eric.
All in favor say aye?
Thanks, everybody.